Okay, Mary, it's your life.
Evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth East Council this third day of May of 2022. I'll now call the meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We have a motion to confirm the agenda. Does anyone have any additions they wish to add? If not, we will, the agenda be approved as prepared for May 3, 2022. Meeting of council of the township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Amanda, second by Jerry. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, if you have a quinary interest, you can disclose it now or as the meeting goes along. We have 21 items on our consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like anyone polled or have questions of anyone of any of them? Andrew?
Yes, could I have a description on 5.1.9, please?
Okay. You just have some questions you want to ask?
Yeah, I guess maybe many update if possible.
Okay, anyone else have anything they would like? Hold their question at this time? If not, okay, Andrew, what questions do you have for 5.1.9? It is the message from Randy Pettapies, our MPP. Over $8 million announced for local water infrastructure projects. Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, no, that's great news. I'm just wondering. I'm just gonna flip to the thing here on my screen. So with that money, I know we've got some stuff going on with the arsenic here. So is that to do with the current EA or the April 2021 EA? The final, I'm just wondering, they seem to be two different projects. So I'm just kind of clarification, I know this, this process hasn't finished up yet. The current one, as I understand it. So this 1.4 million that's been allotted clearly looks like it's for the arsenic treatment, which again is great news. So I'm just wondering, is it the current EA that's not completed or is it the April 2021 EA that's available? So, thank you.
Wes, can you help us out?
So from what I understand, it is the current EA that we've received the funding for. Going back, we changed, if council remembers, we changed the project. We had it on a different project and we moved it to this one, hoping that we would get some more, more funding. And of course, that has worked in our favor. So it is actually for the current.
Just another quick follow up. So that, that previous one, the final draft from last year, that one is no longer current or is the other one just built off of that one? Just for clarification, please.
Yeah, that would be built off of that one. Moving forward.
Obviously both focusing this regarding the arsenic treatment.
That is correct.
Excellent. Perfect. Great news. Thank you.
If there are no more questions or nothing anyone wants polled, we have a motion that items 5.1.1 to 5.121 is set out and a consent agenda for May 3, 2022, regular meeting of council be received for information and that the minutes of April 19, 2022, regular council meeting be adopted. We need someone to move that, move by Andrew. Second by Carol. All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we have no delegations. We have three public meetings. So we'll go to our first public meeting. I declare this virtual public meeting to be open. This virtual public meeting is being held to consider proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Botec Industries concession Nate North Part of Lot 18, Mornington Ward, 7278, Road 116. This virtual meeting is an opportunity for the township to advise the public of the purpose and intent of the amendment and receive their input to considering adoption of an implementing bylaw. If a bylaw is adopted to implement the zoning amendment, a notice of passing will be forwarded by prepaid first class mail to various agencies of interest and others who have registered, requested notice. Excuse me, an appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the adoption of the bylaw may be filed with a clerk not later than the date stated on the notice. Any person attending this meeting who wishes to receive written notice of a bylaw passed to implement the amendment is asked to give their name and mailing address to the clerk following this meeting. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested by email following the meeting. Due to COVID-19, public meeting procedures have been adjusted to adhere to provincial guidelines for holding electronic meetings. Any person who wished to be heard regarding this matter was asked to register prior to this meeting by the deadline of Monday, May 2, 2022, at 12 noon with the municipal clerk. I will now call on Perth County Planner Melissa Gassick to present the planning report and recommendations. Melissa, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Can you, do you see this presentation?
I know. We see that you started the screen sharing, but it's blank or black.
Oh, it's blank. Okay. Let me try again. Do you see it now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, so good evening. This is statutory public meeting pertaining to the rezoning of the land at 7278 Road 116 in Perth East. The subject lands are located at the southwest corner of Road 115 and Line 76 just to the northeast of Millbank. The property has a lot area of 34.87 hectares or eighty, just over 86 acres and 490 meter frontage along Perth Road 116. The property contains a 451 square meters welding assembly building, 1,030 square meter barn, 600 meter storage area, 394 meter shed and 327 meter house and eight parking spaces and associate, which are associated with welding assembly operation in the back. The welding assembly operation is in the cluster of the existing house and accessory buildings, but concealed behind them. All the buildings and accessory structures are connected by a common driveway that connects to Road 116. The remainder of the land is agricultural and is cash cropped. Surrounding land uses are all agricultural. The amendment proposes to update the site specific zoning on the land, which is A10, as you can see on the slide, to reflect the enlarged welding slash assembly operation, increased yard associated with the operation and increase the number of employees from two to five. The land was rezoned previously to permit this welding assembly operation with a maximum size of 139 meters for the welding shop and assembly area at a maximum 262 meters for the associated storage and warehousing area for total permitted of 401 square meters. So the existing welding and assembly business functions, functions as, as an on-farm diversified use for the main use of the property for cash crop and livestock production. The use is permitted as per on-farm diversified use guidelines, and I'm referring specifically to the guidelines on permitted uses in Ontario's prime agricultural areas, a MAFRA publication 851. The guidelines stipulate that OFDU cannot occupy more than 2% of the lot area up to a maximum of one hectare of land area. The more, the more restrictive number being applicable. The buildings themselves cannot occupy more than 20% of the 2%, 2% area of the lot. The subject lands have an area of 34.87 hectares and therefore a maximum area of 6,974 square meters encompassing all buildings and relevant outdoor areas would be permitted for an OFDU. The proposed enlargement of the welding assembly operation fits within the prescribed limits for the buildings proposed. Proposed 750 versus 1394, which would be permitted under the guidelines as well as the total area for, for the OFDU proposed is 6974.86 meter squared, and this is what they're proposing. The drawing is indicates 7,000, but that'll, that'll get actually reduced to this number. Which 6,000, just over, just under 7,000 square meters. This concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, can we have our screen put back, please, so I can see everyone?
Do you still see the? Am I still sharing my screen or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Hmm. I guess that had to. I couldn't do it. I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. Okay, no one registered to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? The applicant or the applicant's agent did not register to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? Are there any questions from members of council? Andrew?
Maybe it's more of, I'm not 100%. I just want to verify. Teacher, I think I've seen these in past, maybe it was a different type of a different type of meeting. But is there normally like a detailed list of this or is that something we'll see later? Or is it just a general welding, welding shop thing, Planer Gassick? Thank you. I'm just, I was looking for a detailed list and then I thought it might be in the verbal, but I didn't, I didn't see it. So I'm wondering, is there a detailed list or is this, is this what we get for the decision making?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council, I don't, I don't understand your question. Like, is it related to the statutory public meeting? There's, there's no recommendation. We will be coming back to council with the actual recommendation. There, there's some other procedural matters that need to be resolved. So this is just a statutory meeting to gather feedback from the public and from, from this council. And then we'll be coming back with, with the actual recommendation.
Yeah, the question is about the report. I wasn't sure whether there was more information coming and you offered that.
Yes, yes, definitely more information coming. There will be. This, this application actually requires an OPA official plan amendment. So we'll be going to county council and then returning to present this full report to Perth East Council.
Okay, any questions? If not, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting by law number 202-2022 to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered at a later date. Okay, now we're going to move to our next public meetings, and this virtual public meeting is being held to consider a zoning bylaw amendment affecting property owned by Wayne Cluster. Legal address concession for part lot 40, Southeast Oak Ward, 2986, Line 29. And the preamble is the same as the one I just, we just did, so I'm gonna jump right down to and I'll call on Perth County Planner Melissa Gassick to present the planning report and recommendations. So Melissa, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'll share my screen, but I'm hoping that the administrator can close my screen after the presentation. For some reason, I was not able to do it last time. Do you see this? Okay. Okay.
We don't.
You don't?
Well.
Okay, let's try again. Do you see it now?
No, we have black screen.
Okay, maybe, maybe it takes a bit of time to load. Let me just try again. Do you see it now?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay, so this is a statutory public meeting pertaining to the rezoning of the land at 2986, Line 29 in Perth East. The image in the center is an aerial view and the right hand image shows the extent of the rezoning amendment and the accompanying Schedule A of the Perth East zoning bylaw. The rezoning application is required as a condition of consent file B4621, which received conditional approval to sever a dwelling that is surplus to farm operation. The consent application was endorsed by Perth East Council on January 12, 2022 and approved the same year on March 16. The enlarged severed portion of the land is shown on the right. Condition number nine of consent B46 requires a ZBA to rezone both the retained and severed parcels in conformity with the PPS and the County of Perth official plan. These policies prohibit any new dwellings on the retained agricultural lands and allow only non-farm residential uses on severed surplus farm dwelling lots. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. We have with us tonight, Ed Dannon would like, is registered to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application. Ed, are you with us? Hi, Ed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to, to speak. I'm not speaking opposed or in favor. I'm basically hoping that there can be some sort of clause written in that normal farm practices into the residential portion of the, the zoning that normal farm practices are undertaken in the accompanying area so that future owners do not have the ability to to have nuisance complaints if there's things done under normal farm practices.
Okay. No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? The applicant or the applicant's agent did not register to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? Are there any questions from members of council? Andrew?
I'm not commenting on, on the, on the, on the file. I just would like to know procedurally, how will Mr. Dannon's input tonight be carried forward and at what time and how that process works? Thank you.
If, if I may respond, I'm not sure whether the question was directed to me. Nuisance orders, this has already been considered at the time of severance. MDS provisions were looked at and the severed portion and the residential portion comply with the MDS guidelines. So therefore, any future nuisance and orders, it would have to be, it, those would be, have to be in compliance with the ministry's guidelines. But as far as, you know, the current situation, that has already been taken into account.
Okay, Carol?
No, I, I'll kind of echo Mr. Dannon there, Ed. We, we wind this back. These were my concerns initially with re-severances and yeah, the normal farm practice board oversees and shadows as well too. So, and it's a good board. They take into fact manure, spreading seasonal work that is done by farming communities. And in the event that people start complaining in these severances and it, it does help the farmer a lot. So there is some pretty good methodology in place and I, I believe it's sufficient. And as Planner Gassick said, there's, it's a process and that's where we are here tonight. And I feel confident that we should be good the way it is and I'm not aware of anything else that can be added. Of course, I have experience with land division, but I'm just a shadow and a yay. The planners do a good job keeping that in order. But yeah, the normal farm practice board is a nice component to have. No, that's all I got.
Okay, anyone else with questions? Seeing no questions, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the virtual public meeting by law number 203-2022 to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered later within the council agenda. Okay, now we're going to move to our third public meeting. This virtual public meeting is being held to consider a proposed zoning, excuse me, proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Sydney and Lena Martin. Legal address of concession six, South Part of Lot 15, Mornington Ward, 6870, Road 121. The preamble is the same, so I'm gonna jump down to the part where I now call on Perth County Planner Melissa Gassick to present the planning report and recommendations. Melissa, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You can see that?
You can see it. Amazing. Third time this term. Okay. So this is such a statutory public meeting pertaining to the rezoning of the land at 6870, Road 121. The subject lands are located, as I said, at 6870, just south of Road 121, just south of Millbank. The property has a lot area of 21 hectares and 350 meters of frontage on Perth Road 121. The property contains an existing dwelling, a livestock barn, machinery, storage shed and the sawmill building and associated outdoor storage. The property is also cash cropped. The owner's also cropped a 20 hectare vacant farm lot adjacent to the subject lands. And this parcel serves, serves as a part of the overall cash crop farming operation. Surrounding land uses are all agricultural. The owners of the subject, subject land, lands have operated a family-run sawmill secondary farm occupation since approximately 2015. The business initially ran out of 370 square meter detached structure and the operation has subsequently expanded over the last few years. The sawmill operation currently consists of the following facilities. 371.6 square meters of the main sawmill building, 214.6 sawdust mulch storage enclosure, 17.8 meter squared log debarking station and approximately 4,200 square meters of outdoor log and finished product staging area. The sawmill operation consists of processing pine logs that are delivered from various locations in central northern Ontario as follows. Debarking and milling logs into a variety of products such as dimensional lumber, plywood sheets and processing lower quality logs and mill scraps for mulch and wood chips for landscaping. So this slide shows the log staging area and the main sawmill building, bottom left-hand corner. The sawdust and mulch products are deposited via conveyor belt to the north side of the mill building within a partially walled enclosure, which you see on the right-hand side. Finished lumber products are staged on a concrete pad area to the east of the mill where customers attend the site to pick up the products. Logs are delivered and dropped in the laneway area between the livestock barn and the dwelling. The logs have, have been stored temporarily on the east side of the barn and predominantly to the west of the west side, west of the barn and south of the mill. The owner indicates that the logs are typically staged for a short period of time before being processed into other products. The number of logs and finished products stage, stage on the property fluctuates based on demand. Here's an image from the road, like the top image. And the distance from the sawmill dust station to the neighboring house is approximately 260 meters. The bottom, the bottom image on the, on the right-hand side is the rear view. The sawmill business functions as an on-farm diversified use for the main use of the property for cash crop and livestock production. The use is permitted as per OFDU guidelines, and I'm referring specifically to the guidelines on permitted uses in Ontario's prime agricultural lands, a MAFRA publication 95, 95, sorry, 851. The guideline stipulated that an OFDU cannot occupy more than 2% of the lot area up to maximum of one hectare of land area, the more restrictive always being applicable. The buildings also cannot occupy more than 20% of the 2% lot area. The existing sawmill business functions as a secondary use to the main use of the property for cash crop and livestock production. The PPS also permits on other on-farm diversified uses that include manufacturing and fabrication operations, trades occupations and equipment repair. In this case, the subject lands have an area of 21 hectares and therefore a minimum area of 4,200 square meters would be permitted for, for an OFDU. The guidelines also permit a maximum of 840 meters squared for the buildings. The proposed zoning bylaw amendment would recognize the existing 604 square meter sawmill structure and the debarking station and the 3,000 meter squared outdoor accessory storage area. So both are significantly lower than the maximum permitted limits. So therefore, the existing, the resulting OFDU would have a total area of 3,604 square meters or 1.7% of the lot area. And just keep in mind, just, just to reiterate again, 2% of the lot area maximum coverage would be permitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have three people who have registered to speak in opposition. The first to speak is Tony Gerber and Catherine Steckley. Mr. Gerber, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. Yeah, I have there's a lot of dust that comes over onto my property and it has made me short of breath for the past two years. And I get a sore throat and I can hardly function. And I can hardly do my job because of it. And I just really need someone to help and fix this problem. I have to wear a respirator when I'm outside. And I am on two inhalers now and I take Reactin and Benadryl every day just to try to control the symptoms.
Okay.
I guess I'm just wondering what can be done.
Okay. Thank you. The second one speaker is Colin Lezier. Mr. Lezier, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, members of council. I apologize, I was, I was actually trying to some, somehow speak on Mr. some somehow speak on Mr. Gerber's behalf, but I guess such such as as it is. So I I I am Colin Leje uh of the firm Garrett Pickfield LLP, and um I am here on behalf of Mr. Tony Gerber. Um, Mr. Gerber is obviously here to answer any questions as well, although um he's also made a a short submission, as you just heard. Uh, Mr. Gerber is the owner of the property north, immediately north, the neighboring property immediately north of the subject property. And the purpose of the application, as you recently heard, is to permit an enlarged sawmill on on the agricultural property that is subject to the application. Uh, the sawmill has expanded in re- in recent years. Uh noticeably so in two thousand and nineteen, according to my client, uh, Mr. Gerber. However, we're along with this expansion, there has been uh in in our in our understanding, there hasn't been the steps, associated steps um of meeting the applicable regulations and industry standards for sawmills in Ontario. So as a result, uh, uh, the expanding sawmill has led to dusted impacts on the neighboring property of Mr. Gerber and Ms. Kathy Steckley. The application specifically requests uh three things. Uh, an increase in the maximum floor area of the sawmill building to six hundred four square meters, a maximum outdoor storage area of three thousand square meters, and a reduction in the side yard setback for the sawdust enclosure area from thirty to twenty meters. And uh we recognize that as part of the rezoning. It is proposed that the existing outdoor sawdust and mulch piles will be fully enclosed, and from our perspective, uh, this is a positive step and is appreciated. Uh, Mr. Gerber has retained an air quality engineer, uh, Mr. Douglas Lyons, to review the application. Mr. Lyons is a is a licensed professional engineer with over thirty years of experience as an air quality consultant.
Excuse me, did you have Mr. Martin's permission to do that?
He uh. I I may not understand uh the question, but essentially, I I don't think his permission would be required uh in this instance, given that uh Mr. Lyons did not go on to the Martin property. Um, and no permission would therefore be required, but I may be misunderstanding.
Well, I guess my point is for a third party to do a review on someone else's property is um not something that usually happens. So I'm a little concerned that you've had someone already review someone else's property, and anyway, I'm I'm not sure that this information is what council needs at this point, but um you can go on with your presentation, but I am a little concerned that you're doing this. Anyway, go ahead.
Of course. So if I'm, just to clarify, so um as as this is as a standard practice, Mr. Lyon does this on, as part of his um, as part of his uh practice, and he simply reviewed the application. He didn't go on to the property and review the app, the the property, so um he was, I just want to be clear that uh we've at all times maintained respect for the Martin property and and I and I hope that is clear. Of course, I I can, I'm happy to uh continue on that um vein if if needed. Um, in summary, Mr. Lyons has made five recommendations, which are contained in his letter, which was circulated to council. And three of them I will highlight now as they are key to the proposed sawmill. So first of all, he proposes the relocate, he recommends the relocation of material stockpiles as far from the Gerber property as possible uh as practical. Second of all, he recommends uh the enclosure of all processing activities and sawdust mulch storage. Um, and I re- I recognize that this has been proposed by the Martins, and that again, that is appreciated. And third of all, he, Mr. Lyons recommends the relocation of any outdoor cutting, wood chipping, or any other dust admitting operations to an indoor properly vented building. This would include the proposed debarking station, which is currently proposed to be conducted outdoors. And so in conclusion, it is our respectful submission that council, should council choose to approve the requested zoning bylaw amendment. The council should uh, a a holding symbol should be applied to the subject property requiring the implementation of the above recommendations, specifically the the two key parts for Mr. From Mercer Gerber's perspective are, first of all, all processing activities should be moved indoors, including the debarking station, and second of all, all piles of sawdust and mulch should be fully enclosed. Now, I I don't want to, I mean, Mr. Gerber is eager to maintain a good relationship with his neighbor, and my understanding that that has been done up to uh throughout their history. And Mr. Gerber is happy to have his neighbor's business thrive. However, he does not want this to come at the expense of the use of enjoyment of of his property. Mr. Lyons and I are available to discuss the recommendations following this meeting, and our contact information is in the circulated letters for this purpose. And uh I'll leave it at that. I thank you for your time, and I am now available to take any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And we have also Darlene Gerber registered. Darlene, do you wish to speak? Mr. Gerber, would you like to say something?
If I may be of any assistance, uh my understanding is that uh the Gerbers were not intending to speak, and that I was I was going to speak on their behalf, so maybe that's the reason for the silence.
Okay, thank you. So no one registered to make a presentation, speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent. We have Sydney Martin, applicant, has registered to speak with respect to the application. Mr. Martin? Would you like to say something? Mr. Martin, are you there?
I am, yes.
Okay, uh, your opportunity to speak is now.
I'm fine, thanks. I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay.
Yep.
Are there any questions from members of council? I'm looking for questions. Darrell?
Yeah, question slash comment, as I look at this on the map.
No comments, Darrell.
Oh.
Question.
Oh, okay. Question, okay. Uh, yeah, I'll just pass for right now. Okay.
Okay, Andrew?
Um, letter that was by uh Mr. Leisure, Leje, um, is that something normally part of this report, or will we see that at another time? I don't believe I received that letter. I've misplaced it.
It did come in an email from uh, from Eric.
Yeah, um, Counselor McAlpine, we did receive it after the agenda was circulated. Um, so just um in conjunction with these virtual meetings, I did send it um through email to the rest of council. Um, I can definitely forward that along to you if if necessary as well.
Thank you, uh, clerk. Uh, I'll 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 look. There's a lot of emails came in the last few days, so probably lost over. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else with questions? If no questions, council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation. Fall into conclusion of the virtual public meeting by law number two oh four dash twenty twenty two to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered at a later date. The virtual public meeting is now concluded, and we will continue with the regular meeting of council. So the first application that had or I'm sorry, the first public meeting that we had, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the report dated May third, twenty twenty two, prepared by the planner entitled zoning bylaw amendment number D fourteen dash Z zero two dash twenty twenty two dash PE submitted by Solomon Martin on behalf of BoTech Industries, Inc. Affecting lots described as concession eight, north part of lot eighteen, Mornington Ward seventy two seventy eight, road one sixteen for information. And that council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen Z O two dash twenty twenty two dash PE, and that council direct staff to prepare a final recommendation report for the zoning bylaw amendment for council's consideration. Excuse me, I need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Andrew. Second by Hugh. So any more comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. Okay, the second public meeting, that was to do with the uh severance for Wayne Klooster. Council of the Township of Perth East received the report dated May third, twenty twenty two, prepared by the planner entitled zoning bylaw amendment number D fourteen dash Z O three dash twenty twenty two dash PE submitted by Catherine Ritzma, Monty's Ritzma Phillips, and Professional Corporation on behalf of Wayne Klooster affecting lands described as part lot forty concession for southeast Oakwood, twenty nine eighty six, line twenty nine for information. And that council had the public meeting pertaining to this D fourteen dash Z zero three dash twenty twenty two dash PE zoning bylaw amendment in order to receive comments from the public. Need a mover and a seconder for that. Moved by Jerry. Second by Hugh. Any more comments or questions? Andrew?
Verify the the concern from uh Mr. Dane will be addressed in the report that's coming back? Or how does that work?
Melissa?
Yes, um, through you, um, Madam Mayor, um, yes, we'll be bringing um uh like a report back to to this council with the recommendations. Um, this um, this project, the sawmill operation, will be subject to site plan control. And our recommend-
Usually we're on, we're on Wayne Klosters.
Oh, sorry, Wayne Klooster. My apologies. Wayne Kloster, Wayne Kloster, um, this report uh is coming up, so there will be a recommendation for Klooster.
Okay, and I guess Andrew's question is, can we address uh Mr. Dana's concerns when we get to that report?
But the report is going to be heard next.
Yeah, it it comes up under planning.
Right, that comes under planning. Um, that um in my opinion, that that concern has already been addressed uh with the MDS. Um, and any future nuisance and odors uh complaints of um not necessarily tied to agriculture, but uh another uh another possible operation that um ca- causes nuisance odors uh would be subject to um other regulations, other provincial regulations. But at this point in time, this this complies with the MDS, um, and there are no issues uh in in that regard. Hopefully this satisfies your your concern.
Okay, anyone else with questions or comments? If not, all in favor of that motion? Eric. Okay, and the third public meeting we had was to do with uh the uh sawmill for Sydney and Lena Martin. So council of the township of Perth East received the report dated May third, twenty twenty two, prepared by the planner entitled zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen dash Z zero four dash twenty twenty two dash PE submitted by Lena and Sydney Martin affecting lands described as concession six, south part of lot fifteen, Mornington Ward sixty eight seventy, road one twenty one for information. And that council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen dash Z zero four dash twenty twenty two dash PE, and that council direct staff to prepare a final recommendation report for the zoning bylaw amendment for council's consideration. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by Hugh. Second by Andrew. Any more comments or questions? Darrell?
Uh, just more comments there again for uh Mr. Gerber, so we uh sure we catch his concerns. He 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 did focus in on odor and emissions, and I'm sure that's going to be something tied in there. I'll just make a bit of a comment on the mapping. I I heard the comments uh directly to the north uh northwest. But that sawmill, that farm is almost directly west of Gerber's, because the roads are on such a slant up there. And if you look at the map, it's almost due west. And seven, two hundred and sixty meters, seven hundred and eighty feet is pretty close, and I I know how that goes with uh allergies and such, and normal farm practice board, I'm sure will have lots around this, but uh uh odor and wood odor is a huge thing around sawmills, and wood, me being severely allergic to a certain type of wood, I know the pain, and I've discovered this in my older years, but I'm going to keep my thoughts aside, but on my personal, but it is almost due west, so the odor and emissions is a huge thing. It's it's serious business, and you know, it expand in the production, you know, it'll it'll keep up, so. No, uh, we got to go forward and see what comes back, but he he did have concerns there, so I'm sure it'll be tied in. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, all in favor of the motion? Eric. Okay, now we're going to move to our public hearing. Council will now temporary adjourn to committee of adjustment to pursue to section forty five of the Planning Act. On that, I now declare this virtual public hearing open. This virtual public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Noon Industries and described as RCP fifty one lot eighty seven RP forty four R five six six two, part one, Ellis Ward, four zero one seven, Perth Road one thirty five. Excuse me, the purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input, and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are asked to withhold comments on this application until all present have been given an opportunity to be heard. Due to COVID nineteen, public hearing procedures have been adjusted to adhere to provincial guidelines for holding electronic meetings. Any person who wished to be heard regarding this matter was asked to register prior to this meeting by the deadline of Monday, May second, twenty twenty two, at twelve noon with the municipal clerk. Any person who wishes to receive written notice of the decision made by the committee of adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary Treasurer following this hearing. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the decision made at this hearing may be filed with the Secretary Treasurer not later than May twenty third, twenty twenty two. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested at this time. I will now call on Planner Melissa Gassick to present the planning report and recommendations. Melissa, the floor is yours.
Do you see the screen?
Uh, yes, we can.
Okay, so this is a minor variance application for for Noon Industries. This is the proposal or project, rather, that is in the works. Um, it'll be coming shortly to to site plan. However, at the moment, they are looking to reduce reduce the northerly setback. Um, the current setback is seventy five meters, and they're proposing to reduce it to thirty meters. Um, and to that, to that effect, they have done a new um calculated floodline uh limit top of the bank um and and various other parameters. However, however, um, it has just come to our attention that also uh NEIS is required uh for woodlot protection, and this will also come in handy with any sort of future buffering that is required um for other applications, age removal and site plan. So at this moment, because the study is not ready, we we're asking for deferral of this application to be heard at a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Melissa. No one registered to speak, to make a presentation or speak in opposition? No one registered to make a presentation or speak in support of the application, other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Ian Noon, the applicant, registered to speak with respect to the application. Hello, Ian, the floor is yours.
Hello, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, again.
Perfect. I have no further comments, I was just here if anyone had any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from committee members? Committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. Hey, the motion is that the council council, excuse me, the Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment. Received the report dated May third, twenty twenty-two, prepared by the planner entitled Minor Variants D thirteen. Dash A zero eight dash twenty twenty-two dash P E. Submitted by Caroline Baker on behalf of Noon Industries affecting lands described as R C P five-one-one, part lot eighty-seven, R P. Forty-four, R fifty-six, sixty-two, part one, Ellis Ward, four zero one seven Perth Road one thirty-five for information. And that the committee defer Minor Variants D thirteen dash A zero eight dash twenty twenty-two dash P E. Mover and a seconder moved by Jerry. Second by. Amanda. All those in favor? Eric. I declare this virtual public hearing closed. Okay, so we're going to move on in our agenda. The next item in our agenda is under planning and it's a zoning by law amendment for. Wayne Klooster severance. Melissa, the floor is yours.
Do you see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So this is a recommendation pertaining to to the rezoning zoning applications that are three dash twenty twenty-two. The proposed proposed Z B A to rezone the land, the purpose of the proposal is to prohibit any new dwellings on the retained farm lot. And to recognize the existing non-farm residential dwelling on the severed lot. The proposed severed lot will be resumed to the agricultural special zone A one. The site specific zone applies to new lots created through the surplus farm dwelling severance process. The A one zone will ensure that the lot contains the surplus farm dwelling. That the lot containing the surplus farm dwelling will only be used for non-farm residential purposes. Such as single detached dwelling, home occupation, bed and breakfast establishment, while also including applicable zoning by law provisions for accessory structures. This Z B A will also resume on the retained farm lot to the agricultural special zone. A five in brackets, one. The site specific zone applies to retain farm parcels as a result of the surplus farm dwelling severance. The A five dash A dash five one zone prohibits any new residential dwelling from being created on the retained. Farm parcel and applies to undersized the lots, in this case lots that are under thirty-three hectares. The site specific rezoning will ensure conformity with sections with section five, six, three, one. Of the County of Perth Official Plan and consistency with section two, three, four, one. C of the P P S. Thank you. This concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Melissa. Are there any questions from Melissa on this report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report dated May third. Twenty twenty-two, prepared by the planner entitled zoning by law amendment number D fourteen dash Z zero-three dash twenty twenty-two dash P E. Submitted by Catherine Ritzma, Montez Ritzma Phillips, Professional Corporation on behalf of Wayne Klooster. Affecting lands as part lot forty concession for Southeast Oakwood twenty-nine eighty-six, line twenty-nine for information. And that council approves zoning by law amendment two oh three dash twenty twenty-two as follows. Number one, that the area shown and hatching on the attached map and described as part lot forty concession for. Southeast Oakwood in the Township of Perth East shall be removed from the agricultural zone A of bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine. And shall be subject to the provisions of section six point nine point one of bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine as herein. After set forth, the zoning of this land shall be known as A dash one on key map fifty-one of schedule A. To bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine as amended. And number two, that the area shown in stripping on the attached map and described as part lot forty concession for Southeast Oakwood. In the Township of Perth East shall be removed from the agricultural zone A of bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine and shall be subject to the provisions of. Section six point nine point five point one of bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine. As herein after set forth, the zoning of this land shall be shown as A dash five. One in brackets on key map fifty-one of schedule A to bylaw number thirty dash nineteen ninety-nine as amended. Mover and a seconder for that moved by. Amanda. Second by. Hugh. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Melissa. Now, Jerry.
Just a quick question for Melissa before she goes, think she's done?
She's back, now I'm back.
Just an update if you if you can provide us. With development in Milverton for the proposal for the Tim Hortons, the potential there, it's been in the works for. Quite some time, I just wonder if you got a verbal update that you could give to council and who's ever watching, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Smith. I believe Wes Respray has a more up-to-date information, hoping he can chime in.
Yes, thanks, Melissa. Through your worship to Counselor Smith, permits for both demolition. And construction of the new Tim Hortons have both been issued. And we have reached out to them. Through through email and phone conversations regarding. The construction when the demolition is going to start on the building. So the holdup now is with. The franchise agreement. So they're just tidying up some of the the loose ends there with the franchise of Tim Hortons. And then they are going to be deconstructing the building and and building the Tim Hortons. And we're hoping that's going to happen in the coming weeks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for the update. Okay, now we're going to move to the C A O. We have the declare surplus block seventy-two of the Gee's. When. Windmill subdivision. Teresa, the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This this report is basically housekeeping in nature. It's been noted that block seventy-two, the walkway should not have been incorporated into the subdivision. So once declared surplus, the. A new reference plan will be prepared and deposited. And the two, the walkway will be divided into two, so that will be added on to those existing lots.
Hey, any questions for Teresa? Jerry?
So usually normally for subdivisions, some blocks are included for future or. Right of ways, et cetera, but. The reason, was there any particular reason for this one being put there in the first place? And the second part of that is. It would be nice to have that as like a walkway back to to the trail that we're that is currently there and then we're upgrading them. Any, any?
So so in terms of the walkway at one time, to have that walkway go through. That was, it was incorporated. But also in terms of discussion and in terms of liability as well, going in between those those properties. Could be a concern as well. There will be a walkway regarding or or going around to the storm management. Area and on to the. Walkway itself or the the trail itself.
Hey, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's currently there now, but it's just a dust path. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else with questions? No questions, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the May third, twenty twenty-two report. Prepared by the C A O entitled declare surplus block seventy-two of the Gee's subdivision phase three for information. That council declares surplus lands described as block seventy-two registered plan three, six, three. Milverton in the Township of Perth East is shown on records plan forty-four M dash eighty. We need move by Andrew. Second by Jerry. Is there any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Teresa. Now we'll move to the clerk and we have a petition for drainage. Eric, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mary Aggits. So yes, this report is just a new petition for new drainage works. Located in Seabridgeville, the petition was made by Elizabeth and Frank Schneider. I will make one note that on the application. Frank Schneider's signature is missing, but that has been rectified, so the petition will still be valid as both property owners have signed. The petition essentially is asking for a new tile drain to be built along Perth Road one thirty. In front or basically alongside the road. And that would help kind of get away any of the surface water that is currently pooling there. And it would eventually outlet into the Richson drain. If there's any questions, I can do my best to answer them. Thanks.
Hey, any questions for Eric? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the petition. For drainage work, section four of the Drainage Act by property owner Elizabeth Snyder. For R C P five eleven, part lot eight, R P forty-four, R forty-seven, sixty-five, part lot three, Ellis Ward. And that the Council of the Township of Perth East appoint Dietrich Engineering Limited. To prepare a report under section four of the Drainage Act. And that staff proceed to provide notice of the proposed drainage works to the Secretary Treasurer. Of the Conservation Authority that has jurisdiction over the lands in the affected area. Need a mover and a secondary moved by. Hugh. Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Eric. We have nothing from finance. We have tender results for the multi-use trail. Wes, the floor is yours.
Good evening. We were very pleased to see that we had seven submissions for this asphalt tender for the for the trail. And the, as council can see, the numbers were really close with the in the price there, so we're happy with this.
Okay, any questions for Wes? See no questions, but you have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report entitled tender results. P W dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one multi-use trail asphalt. Dated May third, twenty twenty-two, prepared by the manager of Public Works and Parks for information. And it confirmed by this resolution, P W dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one. Multi-use trail asphalt paving be awarded to Rima Con Limited for the quoted price of seventy-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, twenty cents excluding H S T. Moved by Amanda. Second by. Daryl. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Wes. We have nothing for building. Then we'll move to recreation and the first item is the Ontario Trium Foundation sponsor. Becky, the floor is yours.
Yes, so this is familiar or similar to other. Requests that we received from organizations such as the Stafford Perth Foundation where we've had people ask for us to sponsor. So this is for the All Wheels Park Committee that are wanting to apply for Trium grants and need. The Township to sponsor it so that it is an eligible application now.
Hey, any questions for Becky? No questions, then the Council of the Township of Perth East received the Ontario Trium Foundation sponsor report. Prepared by the Recreation and Community Service Manager dated May third, twenty twenty-two for information. And that council approves the request for sponsorship for the application of grants available through the Ontario Trium Foundation for the Milverton All Wheels Park. Moved by Andrew. Second by Amanda. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Eric. Okay, and the second item is the budget amendment. Becky?
I guess the Shakespeare Optimists Club are looking to purchase a new scrubber. Which we are as well, so we're hoping we can maybe get a buy one, get one free deal. So anyways, we are looking for support from council for the budget amendment of eighty-four hundred dollars for replacement of the. The scrubber and would come from corporate asset reserve.
Okay, any questions for Becky? Daryl?
I'm just curious, the eighty-four hundred bucks, so you have a couple quotes, do you, Becky? Did you put a bit of a process out to price these scrubbers?
For initially, we just get one quote to get a budget figure and then now it'll now it'll go out and get the three quotes that are required.
Yeah, no, okay, interesting, no great, thanks.
Hey, any other questions? See no questions, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a budget amendment. Shakespeare Hall floor scrubber report prepared by the Recreation and Community Service Manager dated May third, twenty twenty-two for information. And that council approves the capital budget amendment of eight thousand, four hundred dollars for a replacement. Floor scrubber for the Shakespeare Optimus Hall to be funded from corporate asset reserve. Moved by. Jerry. Second by. Daryl. All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
To fire and we have the annual fire department year in review. Bill, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mary Aggits, council. Tonight I'm presenting the twenty twenty-one Fire Department Annual Report. Just snapshot, our alarms, we're back at our pre-pandemic average numbers. Even though we were still dealing with COVID, we tried to maintain our required level of training. And we also did some innovative ways to get our message out through public education. We had success basically with with everything. Firefighting council will see that there was almost ten million dollars in loss. However, that was mainly due to three fairly large fires. But the more important number, at least in my mind, is that firefighters were able to save over sixteen million dollars. Worth of building value, so there's lots of good information in the report and some great photos. Staff did a good job putting this together and and I would certainly try and answer any questions from council.
Okay, so any questions for Bill? No questions, we do have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a report entitled twenty twenty-one Annual Fire Department Year in Review. Dated May third, twenty twenty-two, prepared by the Fire Chief Bill Hunter for information. Moved by. Hugh. Second by Amanda. All in favor? Eric. Okay, thanks, Bill. Now we're going to move on to correspondence and the first item of correspondence is about flying a flag. And I'll let Teresa speak to this. Teresa?
Okay, thank you very much. So as council are aware, we do have a corporate policy regarding. No proclamations regarding or making proclamations or that includes flying of flags. With this one, we have correspondence from Patty Brine. And I did speak with her in regard to it and suggest to, although we we have a policy regarding. No proclamations to forward the information into the municipality and we can certainly circulate that. We can circulate it to staff, council members as well, and if the information comes in, typically we would include it. Typically, we would include it in the public agenda within the consent section of the agenda for information.
Okay, any questions? See no, Daryl?
Yeah, no, I I seen that and yeah, there's this policy around that and yeah, the way it was written there. Typically engage with receive for information is the process. Now, as I read this, I poked around a little bit myself and. I found myself checking into West Perth and the way I read it, West Perth Council had already approved this, but then I looked back, I didn't see council and I don't see anything in their agendas. Some if it's a group in West Perth or maybe I'm overlooking, but I didn't see anything in their council agendas. Is anybody aware, has this actually been to the council in West Perth? I guess staff probably don't even know. The way I read it, it sounded like council, but I don't believe it has been to council unless I'm overlooking their agendas, but. No, it's just interesting. We do have policy on this and yeah, we would. Definitely have to relook on what policies would like if we were to reverse that. So no, thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Jerry?
Yeah, I'm I'm in support of this type of this group. But again, we have that policy. I would like, we've had a number of these come across in the last twenty years or more. I can't recall the reasons why we don't. And our neighbor, some of our neighbors do, maybe not all of them, and perhaps maybe. With the new with the new council coming on board at the end of this year, so maybe the start of next year, maybe something the new council can look at perhaps. It'd be nice to keep it on on the radar to perhaps look at it and maybe change, change the way we we do that with. These requests and that we could support. There's a number of them we get. Just a thought, maybe something we could bring up if someone's. If any of us are getting elected next year if we're running, but I think we'll something we should look at again at some point.
Hey, anyone else? If not, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive a cor- the correspondence from Stafford Perth Pride Board of Directors dated April nineteen twenty twenty-two. Regarding a request for Perth East to fly a pride flag for the month of June in recognition of pride month for information. I have a mover in a secondary for that moved by Hugh. Second by. Andrew. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, and the second item of correspondence is from Matt DeWeard and it's about. Transfer of municipal occupied portion of road. Eric, do you want to speak to this at all?
Yes, for sure. So I may need Teresa to help me out here too. So some, I think it's been in the in the past. This issue of forced roads has come up and I believe we have some money allocated to start rectifying those situations of the forced roads. So just going in with the process, Matt DeWeard has a property with a forced road on it. So he is just looking for council's approval for staff to proceed with. With the actions needed to to rectify that situation.
Hey, any questions from anyone? Not we have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East receive the correspondence from Matt DeWeard. Dated April twenty-five twenty twenty-two requesting that the forest portion of forest. Portion, yes, of line forty-eight included with his property be corrected forest road portion for information. And it counsel direct staff to proceed to contact property owners and take action to have a survey and reference plan. Prepared for line forty-eight township of Perth East to identify each part of the road that is under private ownership. As a part of the reference plan and the portions be transferred to the township of Perth East. We have a mover in the secondary for that moved by. Hugh, second by Daryl. Any more comments or questions? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, next we're moving to committee reports. The first is my meeting log where I was for the month of April. Is there any questions about what I did? If not, is there any other reports anyone else would like to give? The committees or the groups sit on? Nope. Okay, well, then we need just need a motion to accept my meeting log. Moved by. Carrie. Second by. Amanda. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, we have one bylaw. Should be read at first, second, third, and final time and it's bylaw number two oh three dash twenty twenty-two being a bylaw to amend by law thirty nineteen ninety-nine concession for Southeastal Ford twenty-eight. Twenty-nine eighty-six line twenty-nine and that the bylaw listed above be read at first, second, third, and final time. Moved by. Amanda. Second by. Andrew. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, we do have a need for a closed session, so with your permission, we'll put that down under announcements. Are there any notice of motions? Any new business? Any announcements? Okay, so. Then the next item is a regular meeting of council, the township of Perth East be temporary adjourned at eight seventeen. To permit the holding of a meeting in closed session for the purpose of. Personal matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local board members. Moved by. Amanda. Second by Hugh. All in favor? Carrie. So thanks, everyone. Great to see everyone again. Hope yous all have a good night and we'll see yous again. Bye.
Okay, so we need a motion at the council, the township of Perth East rise from closed session and reconvene at regular session at 9:09. Moved by Amanda, second by Andrew. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, so we do have a motion from closed session and Eric, I will let you read the motion.
Yes, so the motion is that the council, the township of Perth East approve the following council honorariums effective January 1st, 2023. Mayor, $28,987.35. Deputy Mayor, $19,740.37. And councilors, $17,347.87.
Okay, so do we have a mover and a seconder for that? Moved by Hugh. Second by Andrew. All in favor? Andrew, do you have a question? Sorry.
Sorry. Just to comment, just I know that through the last 12 years, I've been consistently not in favor of even council raises. I've had it in multiple things. But I think what that's done is we've kind of put ourselves behind the ball a little bit. So I think this is the right thing to do just to keep up with the median in the area. So that's why I'm changing direction a little bit, but I'm sure if I get back again, I'll probably keep going the same direction of saving council money. So that's how I'm gonna vote today.
Thanks, Andrew. Jerry?
We have questions and comments?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, Hugh moved and Andrew second.
Yeah, so I can't support an increase. We've, I voiced my concerns, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay, Daryl?
Again, yeah, no, it's interesting. You know, I've brought this topic up, had conversation with many constituents. Again, they've always questioned the wage of council being light. And there's a lot of fast-moving components within our community, including inflation. Everything you touch, a vehicle, fuel. Everything we go to do, there's lots of money gets poured into municipalities from the province, feds even. And it tends to get absorbed in the wrong areas and many people's minds. And we need to make sure that, you know, whether it's our volunteer firefighters or our council and staff, but we got to pay them well. We get good at people in the positions and it's a lot. This is a good move. It's where it should be. Maybe a little light yet even. We're seeing money being printed around the world very heavily and injected. You got to make sure you get your slice and that council is rewarded fairly. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else with comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Posed. Carried. Okay, then we have that bylaw number 25-2022 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, the township of Perth East at its regular meeting held on May 3rd, 2022 be read a first, second, and third time. Moved by. Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor. Carried. And the final motion that council be adjourned at 9:13. Moved by Andrew. Second by Jerry. All in favor. Carried.